Sergeant, should I read Gavlin? Start from the beginning? Okay. And we are confirmed good to go? Good afternoon and welcome to this joint hearing of the New York City's Council Committees on Economic Development and Transportation and Infrastructure. I'm Majority Leader Amanda Farias, Chair of the Committee on Economic Development. I'd like to thank my colleague and co-chair Majority Whip, Sabrina Brooks-Powers, as well as the other council members present today, Council Members Banks, Lewis, De La Rosa on Zoom, and Ariola. I also want to extend my appreciation to the New York City Economic Development Corporation and other stakeholders for participating in this important hearing. Today's hearing will examine the progress of the JFK redevelopment program, a $19 billion investment aimed at transforming JFK Airport into a modern, world-class facility. While this massive infrastructure project has the potential to create thousands of jobs and expand business opportunities, it is crucial that we ensure transparency, equity, and accountability throughout the process. A key issue we will be exploring today is the terms of the city's lease agreement with the Port Authority for JFK Airport. We need to understand how the funds generated by the airports are being used and to what extent they are being reinvested in the communities most impacted by its operations. We will also be examining efforts to meet the 30% MWBE contracting goal for the redevelopment project. EDC plays a critical role in holding the Port Authority accountable and ensuring equitable access to these opportunities. We want to know what specific steps are being taken to support and empower local MWBEs. Additionally, we want to hear that meaningful community engagement is part of the redevelopment process. The neighborhoods surrounding JFK have long borne the brunt of the airport's impacts, from traffic congestion to air and noise pollution. We need to ensure that their voices are being heard and their needs are being met throughout the airport's redevelopment. We will also plan to discuss the Port Authority's enforcement of quality-of-life issues for local residents, such as illegal truck parking and idling in residential areas near the airport. While we recognize the vital role that JFK Airport plays in the city's economy, we must find ways to mitigate the negative impacts on surrounding communities. Finally, we will be requesting a comprehensive progress report on the redevelopment program. The JFK Vision Plan outlines a range of challenges facing the airport, from inefficient terminals to limited transit access. We need to understand how each of these issues is being addressed and whether the project is on track to meet its goals. Council Member Brooks Powers' bill before the committee today, Intro 134, would do just that. Intro 134 would require biannual reports to the city council from EDC regarding the JFK Airport redevelopment project and related community benefit agreements. I'll let my co-chair discuss her bill in more detail in a moment. Before we begin, I would like to remind all those present today to please maintain decorum throughout the hearing. If you are here to testify, you will have three minutes to speak when your name is called. Please keep responses concise so that everyone has a chance to be heard. If you are unable to finish, please submit your complete written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Finally, I would like to thank the economic development team here at the council, Senior Counsel Alex Paulinoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hongach, and Finance Analyst Glenn Marsaloni for all their hard work preparing for this hearing. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Majority Leader and Chair Brooks Powers, for her opening remarks. Majority Whip, Brooks Powers, for her opening remarks.
Good afternoon and thank you for attending this joint hearing of the Committees on Transportation and Infrastructure and Economic Development. Today, we will be focusing on the JFK redevelopment program to better understand the progress that has been made on improving and revitalizing one of the busiest airports in the country and the effects these changes are having on the surrounding communities. In addition, the committee will hear Intro Number 134, sponsored by myself, in relation to requiring regular reports on the redevelopment plans at JFK International Airport. I would like to thank my fellow co-chair, Majority Leader Amanda Farias, for her support on today's hearing. JFK is a major economic engine for the region that supports hundreds of thousands of jobs and generates tens of billions in annual sales and wages. However, for years, the communities adjacent to the airport, primarily Black and Brown, environmental justice communities have endured the pollution, noise, and traffic that JFK has produced. Overall, 37 zip codes directly surround the airport, so we must ensure that JFK acts as a better neighbor. JFK is leased by the City of New York, directly to the Port Authority. Thus, it is critical that we understand how our land is being redeveloped. As such, last year, we held a hearing on JFK Airport, but the Port Authority declined to testify before the council. Today, yet again, the authority has declined to sit for questions before the city's democratically-elected council. I am once more disappointed in the Port Authority for willfully ignoring the city and communities in which it directly affects. We intend to revisit this topic regularly, and it is my sincere desire that the Port Authority joins us in the future. With that said, I would like to thank the New York City Economic Development Corporation for agreeing to testify before the committees today on their role as lease manager for JFK. At today's hearing, we will be examining the environmental and community impact of this redevelopment. For decades, the airport has placed burdens on the surrounding airport communities. Noise, pollution, and traffic all have negative consequences on health and quality of life of residents. JFK is a beneficial asset to the entire metropolitan region, so it is imperative that the negative effects of the redevelopment do not fall solely on the airport's neighboring communities. Next, we will be inquiring about the use of local workers on the redevelopment program. The JFK redevelopment program is a 19-plus-billion-dollar investment that will add more than 15,000 jobs to the area, with 9,600 direct jobs coming from the redevelopment. As Chair of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, I have focused on the importance of looking at infrastructure through the lens of equity. As such, it is vital that the substantial economic benefits that will come from JFK redevelopment program are equitably dispersed to the workers and businesses living near the airport. In addition, JFK redevelopment program has a goal of 30% MWBE utilization across all redevelopment projects. As an advocate for increased utilization of MWBEs, I believe businesses across the city owned by women and New Yorkers of color deserve the opportunity to obtain major government contracts. Ensuring diverse businesses have equitable access to those opportunities, strengthen communities, and extends economic opportunity across the city. The committee will be checking in to ensure that redevelopment contracts and projects are being made accessible to MWBEs. Finally, the committees will be addressing how city agencies are engaging local communities surrounding the airport. Given the vast investment in the airport and its effects on local jobs, businesses, and traffic, we want to make sure the local communities are kept in the conversation with redevelopment policymakers. Before we begin, I would like to thank my staff and committee staff for their hard work. Kevin Kautowski, Senior Policy Analyst; John Basile, Senior Policy Analyst; Mark Chen, Senior Counsel to the Committee; Connor Mealy, Counsel to the Committee; Adrian Dreppaul, Senior Financial Analyst; Jack Segenthaler, My Policy and Budget Director; Kiara Powell, My Communications Director; and Renee Taylor, My Chief of Staff. I will now ask the committee counsel to go over some procedural items and swear in the representatives from EDC. But first, I'd like to acknowledge that we have been joined by council members Gutierrez, Aviles, Narcisse, and Bacher. Thank you.
Alex Paulinoff, Senior Counsel. Will all members of the administration today please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chairs Farias and Brooks Powers and members of the Economic Development and the Transportation and Infrastructure Committees. My name is Jennifer Sun, and I serve as the Executive Vice President of Planning for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined by my colleague Mikel Aggett, Senior Vice President of Government and Community Relations. We are here to testify about EDC's role in the JFK redevelopment program. The John F. Kennedy International Airport is critical to New York City's economy and the aviation industry, is one of the largest employers in Queens. JFK supports tens of thousands of direct and indirect jobs and generates over $40 billion in economic activity while connecting city residents to the world and bringing the world to us. According to the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, JFK directly employs nearly 40,000 workers and generates more than $16 billion in wages in nearly 300,000 jobs across the region. As you may recall from our January 2023 testimony, the City of New York owns the land on which both LaGuardia Airport and John F. Kennedy International Airport are located. Through the maritime contract between New York City's Department of Small Business Services and EDC, the city retains EDC to perform services, including the promotion and administration of leases for certain city-owned properties, which includes publicly-owned aviation facilities. As part of this arrangement, we at EDC are the lease administrator for the city's lease agreement with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey for both airport sites. The Port Authority is a financially self-supporting, by-state agency that is tasked with building, operating, and maintaining critical transportation and infrastructure assets in New York and New Jersey. Port Authority is the last C of JFK through a triple net lease agreement in which the tenant is responsible for the payment of all expenses related to the site, such as rent and utilities, insurance, and maintenance costs. The purpose of a triple net lease is to make the tenant responsible for everything related to the site and remove the landlord from any involvement in the operations of the tenant at the site. Under these terms, the Port Authority has complete operational control of JFK Airport. Through its operational control, the Port Authority oversees capital planning, such as renovations, as well as the current JFK redevelopment program. The Port Authority is also responsible for all aspects of airport functions, including airside operations, asset management, maintenance, customer service, capacity utilization, environmental stewardship, safety, security, and community relations. Many of these activities are carries out through subleases, vendor agreements, and concessions. The Port Authority has leased, developed, and operated JFK from the city through various leases and amendments dating back to 1947. The current lease agreement for JFK began in 2004 and was set to expire in 2050. However, a lease amendment facilitated by the city in 2021 extended the lease expiration to 2060. As lease administrator, EDC participates on the airport board with Port Authority staff. The airport board was created in the 2004 lease to assist with and inform the administration of the lease. To be clear, the airport board is not a reporting, oversight, or enforcement body. Rather, it is tasked to review municipal terminal operations against certain financial, operational, and performance standards that were established by the city and the Port Authority at the time. With respect to the 2004 lease, the performance metrics shared by the Port Authority at the airport board include market share, passenger and cargo service, operations, capital spending, quality of service, and community relations. As part of the 2021 lease extension, the Port Authority agreed to share additional metrics related to environmental sustainability and community initiatives associated with the JFK redevelopment plan. In addition, EDC on behalf of the city can use airport board meetings to raise topics that advance shared goals. For example, at an airport board meeting last year, EDC echoed the community's concerns regarding overnight truck parking in residential neighborhoods in Southeast Queens. As a member of the Deputy Mayor of Operations Multi-Agency Task Force to address inadequate overnight truck parking throughout the city, EDC was able to use its participation in the airport board to support the community's calls for the Port Authority to identify potential acreage for this use. In collaboration, the Port Authority was able to negotiate with its private operator, and in November 2023, received Port Authority Board approval to provide approximately 100 additional spots and 25 EV chargers at JFK Airport for overnight truck parking. Although much work remains to address chronic overnight truck parking in residential areas, the expanded on-airport truck parking provided by the Port Authority is supporting the city's efforts. In 2018, in anticipation of a JFK redevelopment effort, the Port Authority convened the JFK Redevelopment Community Advisory Council, co-chaired by U.S. Congressman Gregory Meeks and former Queensborough President Melinda Katz. The Community Advisory Council has representatives from the New York State Legislature, New York City Council, New York City Community Boards, as well as local nonprofits and community-focused organizations. The Community Advisory Council convenes regularly and currently receives information regarding the JFK redevelopment and works with the Port Authority to support community outreach efforts and develop community-focused programs to provide meaningful opportunities for local and diverse businesses, MWBEs, students, and job seekers. Between 2018 and 2020, the Port Authority was in negotiations with multiple terminal operators to advance various work streams related to the JFK redevelopment effort. Amidst these efforts, the global COVID-19 pandemic hit, restricting international travel, disrupting global supply chains, and precipitating a chilling effect on the financial markets. JFK traffic volumes were severely affected, and the viability of the JFK redevelopment was jeopardized. Against this backdrop, in February 2021, the de Blasio administration signed an emergency executive order to extend the Port Authority's lease of JFK Airport from 2050 to 2060. This occurred in close consultation and coordination with Congressman Meeks and Queensborough President Richards. By extending the lease, the previous administration was able to facilitate the viability of the redevelopment projects and their associated community benefits, including nation-leading minority and women-owned business goals, local business goals, and sustainability initiatives. In closing, I wish to turn to Introduction 134, the proposed legislation which would require EDC to produce reports twice a year on the progress of the JFK redevelopment plans. EDC is currently reviewing the legislation, along with our colleagues at the Law Department and the Port Authority, the latter of which oversees and is responsible for the JFK redevelopment. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and we will now take your questions.
Thank you so much for your public testimony today and for being here with us. I'm gonna start off with a couple rounds of questions, and I'll pass it over to Chair Brooks Powers. I'd like to go over some of questions around the lease terms. In 2004, the city and the Port Authority signed a 50-year lease for JFK Airport. At our last hearing, EDC noted that the Port Authority, New York, New Jersey, pays $153 million annually with a 3% escalator every year, and that rent goes to the general fund. In addition, EDC responded that there were traditional remedies if the Port Authority, New York, New Jersey defaults on payments for rents, having done RFPs for different terminal operators, but determined that the PA-NYNJ is the best one to fulfill these goals. With that, what were the most important takeaways for this negotiation for the city?
Although I think on one hand, you know, neither of us were a party to those negotiations in 2004 or in the more recent lease extension, I think if the question is, what did the city get out of the lease extension most recently from 2021? I think the city worked closely with the governor's office, but also with Congressman Meeks and Borough President Richards together. I think there was a concerted effort to ensure that there are strong and specific MWBE participation goals for not only construction contracts, but also professional services contracts, that there is prioritization of awarding contracts to local business entities in priority zip codes around JFK, as well as more specific environmental sustainability commitments and a series of community initiatives to support increasing exposure for high school students to the aviation industry.
Okay, and is the same deal for rents, is this the same deal for rent today?
So, as a result of the 2021 lease extension, I believe the city has increased the rent that is received by the city by $5 million a year. So, the total rent payment to the city's general fund is now $183 million annually.
Sorry, say again?
The current rent payment to the city is $183 million annually, and that includes the $5 million annual increase negotiated in 2021.
Will that include the 3%?
We can confirm whether that includes a 3-point explanation.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that follow-up. And I guess, just in alignment here, I know in Section 4.10 of the lease agreement, it appears the city has the right to adjust it, at least the rent paid by the Port Authority. And have we made any adjustments outside of this, of the 2021 extension?
We have not made any other lease amendments since 2021.
Okay, and can you folks speak to what the city specifically does with the funds?
It's actually not our purview as EDC. Because it goes to the city's general fund, OMB, has authority over how those funds are dispersed.
And do you folks know to what extent any of those funds are currently redistributed to the communities impacted by the airport?
We do not. We would have to speak with our OMB colleagues to get a fuller accounting.
And could you go into more detail the remedies EDC has in regards to if the PA-NYNJ defaults on payments for rents?
The remedy through the lease is to default the Port Authority if it's not performing in accordance to the lease terms. What that would mean practically if we were to default the Port Authority is that either the city or a private operator would need to step into the Port Authority's role in taking over the contracts to operate the airports.
Okay, and what types of RFPs?
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, if I could just add on to that. One thing to keep in mind is that EDC is not a signatory to the lease. The city signs the lease, the SBS Commissioner signed it, and so questions about default and like what the practical reality of that would be would be a city decision and not a New York City Economic Development Corporation decision.
Got it. Thank you for that comment. And any type of RFPs have been done for terminal operators before?
Because the Port Authority is responsible for operations and capital planning for JFK, RFPs to support its redevelopment and any capital investment would be happening through the Port Authority, not through EDC.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the airport board. The lease states that the quarterly updates from the Port Authority to the airport board are supposed to include updates with regard to potential collaboration with EDC and the city to foster development opportunities. Has the Port Authority discussed those areas for collaboration with EDC?
Since I assumed my role at EDC in 2022, we have held two airport board meetings last year, in May and in December. And in those meetings, the Port Authority has shared reports that they have also shared with the Community Advisory Council that has provided information about the progress of each of the terminal projects, MWBE awards and payments, as well as community outreach initiatives.
And just from my knowledge, quarterly updates are, in 2022, you're saying you've had two meetings. Does that mean they've presented you with two reports each of those meetings? So, there's four reports for the year?
So, to clarify, we've only had two meetings last year. So, even though in the lease, it does talk about quarterly meetings, in reality, we have had two meetings. Part of it is because we're building up our capacity on our team to be able to engage more regularly with the Port Authority. But in each of those meetings, we've received, I think, at least one report that, again, was shared with the Community Advisory Council. And then, at a recent meeting in December, we also received an annual air traffic report that is also available on the Port Authority website.
Okay. I mean, I guess for us here in the council in terms of accountability and holding the Port Authority to what they're mandated to do in the lease, why are we not pushing harder, one, for the meetings, which I know calendars can be complicated, so sometimes that's more difficult? But if they're mandated to present us quarterly reports, why isn't that just being sent in an email to the EDC?
So, we were eager to meet with the Port Authority more regularly. I will, I think, highlight that, you know, this has begun to establish a more regular line of communication because of staff turnover at the EDC Transportation Department. You know, we're building back that capacity and establishing a set of working relationships with the Port Authority. So, our goal is to ramp up towards quarterly meetings this year. And the reports are actually shared with us in advance of the meetings, and then we review them together at the airport board meetings. So, there is a basis for conversation and for EDC to be able to ask questions and follow up.
Okay. I mean, we would, and I'm sure my co-chair will go into this a bit more as well, but quarterly meetings obviously need to happen, but at the very least, quarterly reports should be happening to the Economic Development Corporation, especially if we're only able to schedule twice a year when we know there are four quarters in a year.
Chair, if I could just follow up on that. I think one thing to keep in mind is that the 2004 lease and the creation of this airport board, at the time, didn't really contemplate the massive JFK redevelopment effort that's underway now, nor did it really contemplate sort of extensive external engagement. So, to reiterate something that Jennifer said, many of the, all of the materials that have been shared with the airport board are also made available to the Community Advisory Council in an external setting, in public meetings. I believe Chair Brooks Powers attends those meetings with her colleagues as well, and those materials are available on the website. And so, I think that with the establishment of the Community Advisory Council, it created an additional mechanism of oversight with the community directly in a way that wasn't contemplated in 2004, and I think is reflective of an effort to have more robust engagement with the community on these critical topics.
Sure. No, thank you for that. I think, I mean, for myself, even before this hearing, I went to the website to kind of see what the reports look like. I was only really able to see a PowerPoint that had some of the data analysis and some of the data points, but didn't necessarily produce a blanketed report that maybe, I guess, in my brain, it comes out more so in a document that has all of the data that they're computing and trying to analyze to move forward on their progress or the metrics. So, if possible, would you folks be able to provide those reports or the report that you've been given, both the annual and the quarterly?
Yes, we can provide the reports that have been shared with us. You'll see that it's the same reports that are shared at the Community Advisory Council.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that. And then, just one last question on this. What's the current status of the airport board director?
I'm sorry, repeat the question, the current status?
What is the current status of the airport board director? Have we filled the position full-time?
I think you're referring to the aviation director role at EDC?
Yes.
Yeah, so when we testified in January 2023, that position had been vacant for some time. Last year, we did fill that role, and so we do have an aviation director who was at the last Community Advisory Council meeting. I believe met Chair Brooks Powers at that time as well.
Okay, great. In terms of sustainability, how is the JFK redevelopment program incorporating it and resiliency measures?
The Port Authority is trying to decarbonize its operations through a number of things. So, it's requiring the terminal developers and operators through best efforts to transition to using electric vehicles during the construction period, as well as transitioning the ground service equipment at the airport to electric equipment as well. We also toured with the Deputy Mayor of Operations staff the barge service that's currently in place by the Port Authority to bring construction aggregate materials to the site and to bring out construction demolition materials off the site as a way of significantly reducing truck trips in the local neighborhoods. The Port Authority has also required a minimum of LEED Silver certification for the new terminal buildings.
And are there specific targets for reducing greenhouse gas? And are there specific targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, improving energy efficiency, increasing the use of renewable energy throughout the project?
The port authority has set specific goals, I think, to try to transition, again, the airport operations to be as low emissions as possible by 2050, but the port authority would be in a better position to talk about those specific goals and commitments.
And how will the redeveloped JFK be better to withstand the impacts of climate change compared to the current airport?
Again, the port authority, I think, would be in a better position to assess its progress and the difference that it's making through the transition.
Okay. And then, I just have two last questions, and then I'll turn it over. According to the airport advisory panel projections, JFK's demand for passenger traffic could exceed its capacity by up to three million passengers annually within the next few years. For every million passengers not accommodated, the New York, New Jersey region loses approximately one hundred and forty million in annual wages, four hundred million in annual sales, and two thousand five hundred jobs. Are these numbers still accurate?
We would have to have a conversation with the port authority to understand how they developed those initial projections back in 2017 and how they might evaluate that today against the current redevelopment project.
Just one second. Just my last question, what recourse does the city have if the port authority is not adequately meeting the commitments outlined in the vision plan?
Our approach is really to strengthen our engagement with the port authority in these airport board meetings, but also outside of the airport board meetings. And to make clear that we have, I think, a shared priority around really maximizing economic access and opportunity related to the JFK redevelopment project, as well as community benefits and environmental sustainability. So, we see our role as, you know, maintaining active and sustained engagement.
I appreciate that response. I do just want to urge you folks to encourage the port authority to have a better relationship with the city council. At the end of the day, you folks are managing the property that they are leasing, we have a lease agreement, and the responsibility will continue to fall on the Economic Development Corporation's hands if their refusal to show up to the council and answer real questions. And if they're not incorporating you folks in their vision planning or their updates or in any other capacity, this will be a continuation of our tenure as council members. And I don't think that's fair to the Economic Development Corporation. And so, in this process, whether it's through reports and maybe making sure there's consistent communication with us and providing us those reports and through, obviously, the community meetings, through the advisory council, which are critical to the engagement process and the transparency process, I really urge you folks and for the port authority folks watching the hearing today that they do better and show up to the New York City Council's hearings going forward. But thank you for answering my questions, and I'll, I'll turn it over to my co-chair, Majority Leader Brooks-Powers.
Thank you, and just underscoring the same sentiment in terms of the need for the port authority being active participation in this discussion. We recognize that they are a state agency, just like the MTA, who comes multiple times before this body. But considering that, in this instance, the airport is operating on city land, there is a level of accountability that is warranted in the discussion. But again, wanted to thank you for being here to answer the questions that you are able to, and we hope that the ones that you're unable to answer, that you're able to get those answers from the port authority and report it back to the council. So, just wanting to add on some questions as it pertains to the airport board, adding on to Majority Leader Farias. So, in our last hearing on JFK, on the JFK redevelopment program in January of 2023, EDC noted that in regards to the airport board, that they were working towards increasing community and council member involvement on this board. In addition, EDC said that they would discuss the ability of minutes being published or made public as meetings are currently closed now. Within the past year plus, what has EDC done to make the airport board more community and council-oriented?
As I've learned more about the community advisory council and having attended one of the meetings to understand, you know, what is covered in those presentations, and then what information is reviewed at the airport board meetings, my view is that the community advisory council is a very robust venue for, you know, community engagement and an opportunity with the port authority and with the terminal developers and operators in the room to have a venue for holding, you know, both parties accountable through that sort of process. But also see that there is an opportunity for the airport board to complement the community advisory council presentations as well. That said, I think we, we see the community advisory council as being the appropriate venue for community engagement around the JFK redevelopment project.
Do you know how the advisory council meetings are convened? Who calls for the community advisory meetings to take place?
I don't know who technically convenes them. Okay.
And the frequency, the date of time, the location is all selected by the port authority. How do you imagine the community being able to hold the port authority accountable in those spaces? How have you seen it in the one meeting that you have attended?
I see that there's an opportunity to ask questions. Although I recognize it's a very lengthy presentation, there's a lot of information that, you know, is shared.
What point of the meeting that you attended did the community ask questions?
I don't remember.
Was it during the, the different sections of the agenda, was it at the end? Do you recall?
I think there were different opportunities during the presentation.
It was at the end.
Okay.
And like you said, it's a very long meeting, and people are coming in from after work, and the agenda is set. Do you know who sets the agenda for the advisory council meetings?
Sounds like it's the port authority.
It's the port authority. So, when we say that there's an opportunity for the community to hold the port authority accountable in the space that they curate, not so much so. But I do appreciate your sentiments on that. In terms of the, the two reports that you received last year, do you know if the report is identical to the report that's in the minutes that are on the website for a new JFK?
I can't say that I've compared the presentations to verify whether the same information is being presented.
I'd be curious to know if the information mirrors one another or not, because I do know that the information that's presented in the advisory council meeting is not necessarily, as the majority leader shared, of blanket of information that you could kind of understand how they get to those numbers that they're presenting, or to understand what is being presented. It is curated in a way that it's digestible to the public, but it's not giving the full, authentic lens of what is at stake. And so, I'm curious if EDC's report is the same as that report, because if so, I would argue that EDC is still not getting the full picture. And then, on the flip side, if EDC is getting more information, that is showing that the community is not seeing full transparency. So, I would like to have an, an idea if you can report back to the council in terms of the report that EDC receives versus the report that is presented at the advisory council meetings, if they're identical, and if not, what the differences are in those reports.
We're happy to do that comparison. I will say superficially, it looks like the same PowerPoint presentation that's shared at the community advisory council. We look forward to, you know, a partnership with you and the other council members to talk more specifically about what underlying data and additional performance metrics you're interested in seeing, and that EDC can play a role in asking for.
And I think that would be helpful, and I'm glad to hear you say that. And that's where, like, intro one thirty-four looks to do. It looks to be able to pull out the relevant data to help us know, one, that the port authority is holding true to some of the tenants in the, in the lease, but then also to have the, the transparency and accountability that's needed for it. How has? Just going back to the initial question I was asking, just wanting to know in terms of the airport board minutes, is, has that been made published, like, has it been published publicly just yet, or no?
We have not been sharing minutes from the meetings, no. We, we take staff notes, it's not, you know, we don't have like an official note taker at the meeting to prepare minutes with the possibility of that being shared publicly.
Is there any intention to at some point?
That is something that we need to talk with the port authority respectfully, because we're a part of the board together. It's not a decision that we can make unilaterally. So, even if we have the point of view of being comfortable with sharing the information.
Does EDC have that point of view that you would be willing to share?
That's the point of view that I have.
So, the EDC has that point of view?
Yes.
Has EDC asked the port authority if they would be okay with making it public yet?
We may have had conversations about that in the past, happy to ask again and push on that.
That would be great. Are there any new additions since our January hearing to the airport board from EDC and/or the community?
When you say new additions, meaning new representatives from this?
To the board.
From staff. Yes, from the perspective of, you know, my having participated in the first airport board meetings last year, so I could be new to the airport board, in addition to our newly hired aviation director who started in June. So, he participated in the airport board meeting in December. And then additionally, you know, so there's four mayoral appointees to the board, in addition to four port authority appointees. So, to just complete the picture on the EDC side, you know, I'm the EVP of Planning. We have the aviation director from the transportation and waterfront department on that board. We would also have the SVP and department head of transportation and waterfront representing EDC on that board. And finally, a senior vice president from the asset management department at EDC, who we work closely with.
Has EDC considered leveraging one, if not more, of those mayoral appointments to be a representative from the community to serve on that board?
Thank you for the question, Chair. After this came up at our last hearing in January, we did have extensive conversations with the law department about, you know, a mayoral appointment outside of EDC staff. Our understanding is that because this board functions to help support and facilitate the lease, that it is not open to the public in the same way that the community advisory council meetings are. So, while we did have discussions about it, the ultimate decision was that the mayoral appointees will continue to be EDC staff as a, as that series of meetings being about lease administration, rather than, you know, as we've discussed earlier, the implementation of the redevelopment plan.
I'm just curious about that ruling by the, the state's attorney, the city's attorney, and only because when I think about the health and hospital board, for example, they have members that are appointed from the mayor on that board, similarly from the council, that are not necessarily agency, staff, or bureaucratic in any way. And they deal with leases, they deal with a lot of contracts as well on behalf of the city. So, I'm not really following the rationale for that finding.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the health and hospitals board. I guess my question back would be, is the health and hospitals board administering a triple net lease? So, going back to our testimony and the description of the function of that lease, leaving all of the operations to the port authority as the tenant, rather than to the city and by extension, EDC as the lease manager. So, just based on what you've explained, I imagine that the structures are different because of this being a tool of lease administration. I will also just add, you know, anecdotally, as Jennifer and I have been sort of learning a lot of the history, as you can imagine, a lease going back to nineteen forty-seven, has a lot of ups and downs between the various administrations, both on the mayoral side and the gubernatorial side. One of the things that we've come to understand is that, you know, when the 2004 lease was negotiated and this airport board was established, part of that was to solve a problem with the fact that the city and the port authority had very negative, a very negative relationship at the time, right? You think of some of the history of the Giuliani administration threatening to privatize, you know, both JFK and LaGuardia. And so, our, our sort of reading between the lines of that 2004 lease, being that the airport board was initially established to ensure that both parties were speaking to one another in a way that they had not been. You know, as we had mentioned when we were back here in, in January 2023, our understanding was that there were also years in the previous administration where the airport board was not being convened. And so, what I will say is that, under the new administration, both from the mayoral side and the gubernatorial side, is that it has been a goal to have those meetings to ramp up, as Jennifer explained, and to ensure that there are more open lines of communication than what our predecessors have had.
And thank you for that. I still don't necessarily agree with the outcome of that decision, and I say that because in the lease itself, it also talks about certain community benefits as a component of the lease. And who else better than to make sure that the port authority is staying true to those commitments, but a member of the community? So, I, I just still don't agree with that outcome. I'd like to follow up a little bit more. It would be great to see not just agency representation on both sides, right? Gubernatorial and the, the mayoral side, but to have, you know, someone that is a part of the, the impacted community on that board. In the 2021 amendment to the airport board agreement, signed by the city and the port authority, both parties committed to engage in a quote-unquote "process of updating and revising" performance standards, including new standards regarding environmental sustainability and community initiatives. Has the airport board generated those new standards?
It's not the responsibility of the airport board to generate performance standards. Instead, we do look to the port authority to put forward their point of view of the commitments and the strategies.
But the lease says both parties.
Well, again, I think my view is that because the port authority is operating the airport, they're in a better position. Okay. So, again, EDC's role on the airport board can be, and what we are doing is reviewing the information that the port authority shares about, you know, what are their goals and what are their strategies for achieving environmental sustainability and community impact.
So, based on what the lease says, which prescribes the role that EDC plays, not the role that EDC chooses to play, I think we need to look at how we establish and update these standards as it is laid out in the lease, because it, again, says both parties. A follow-up to that, and I would like to see that from EDC, but a follow-up to that is how has EDC, or how will, in this case, EDC consult with the community or topic area experts to establish these recommendations for the revision of the standards?
Yeah, thank you for the, for the question, Chair. I think, you know, given EDC's mission for economic development across all five boroughs, we're definitely open to conversations from the community, in addition to whatever may be asked or shared at the community advisory council with the port authority. We're happy to have those conversations with you. I know that we had reached out in October to try to schedule time with you and your team to discuss this very topic. had reached out in October to try to schedule time with you and your team to discuss this very topic. Um, and so I think there is room for us to work together to better understand what the community's priorities are, and then more specifically, what EDC has the um role and venue to help support.
No, and thank you for that. And I would, I welcome and have always welcomed meetings with EDC um with uh the head of EDC, who has not been willing to meet with me. Um, so we've had to revert to a hearing, but um-
Um, I'm sorry, Chair. I I do have to push back on that because I know that uh President and CEO Andrew Kimball has always been willing to meet with elected officials. I know that we were not able to get it calendared at the end of the year, but um I wouldn't characterize it that he was unwilling to meet with you.
We could agree to disagree because the feedback from my staff when we requested it was that he was not going to make himself available. We were willing to change the date. But again, I don't want to take up space dispute in that. Um, I guess I I could agree to disagree on that. The next question I have is the Airport Board is empowered to interface with certain city agencies like TLC and make recommendations quote-unquote pertaining to improved and more efficient traffic management at the New York airports. Has it made such re-recommendations, and if so, what are they?
We have haven't talked about issues that pertain to TLC, or improving ground transportation around the airport. But that's an area that we would welcome further conversations with you and other constituents to understand what their concerns are and how EDC can be helpful in bringing TLC to the table um to pursue other solutions.
I'm gonna pause because I have more questions, and I want to yield to my colleagues. Uh, I know we have a few members.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Um, I'd first like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Vernakov and Rivera. Um, we have first up for member questions, Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Vernakov, then Aviles.
Thank you, Majority and Whip, and um I want to say thank you for being here. One of the thing before I ask my question, I want to echo on, is the importance, I heard Majority Whip um learned to it, um, is the importance for MWBE to get um their fair share of contracts. It's very, very important. And um the job opportunity as well. What measure are being taken to ensure that job opportunities are accessible to residents of diverse backgrounds? I mean, diverse background in communities across the city. Can you provide details on any targeted hiring initiatives on that, ensuring that we have equitable access to employment opportunities? Those two questions before I come back to the next one. Yeah.
So the Port Authority, in its partnership with the Council for Airport Opportunity, which is one of the nonprofit organizations that is charged with supporting um workforce outreach and placements, I think would be in a better position to talk more in detail about the specific um local hiring initiatives that they're undertaking. I will note that our Aviation Director, who started last June, attended, he is now on the Board of the Council for Airport Opportunity, and joined the first board meeting last fall. Um, I highlight that because I view that as an opportunity, you know, with the Aviation Director's participation on that board now, of having increased visibility to their activities, to have a better understanding of what they're doing, and where EDC and the Port Authority, with the elected officials, can um support stronger outreach in the community. That is actually one of the areas that we want to learn more about through the Airport Board.
Oh, sorry, I have to repeat my question. I did not put my, I put it off. How will the JFK Redevelopment Program address noise impacts on surrounding communities? Are there plans to sunroof schools, libraries, places of worship, and homes that experience significant aircraft noise? How is EDC working with the Port Authority to en- to ensure noise mitigation measures are implemented in equitable way?
So on one hand, I can't speak to what noise mitigation measures the Port Authority, working with the terminal operators, are implementing. I will say, though, that is that is an area that EDC is very interested in understanding more about um with respect to what the Port Authority and the terminal operators are responsible for doing. I'm not going to speculate because I don't know.
But living next to the airport, I can tell you, for the, whatever the route, the plane taking, you can feel the vibration, even though I'm not that close. I cannot imagine people that's so close, and the community's been outraged at me all the time, no, not knowing that I'm a council, not in the federal level. But since you're sitting here, I'm saying that I don't know how the um decide on the route at a certain time. Yes, we have a break lately, but people in Roselle, different places, they calling me, even in Brooklyn, to say what's going on. They never get a break from the route, from the noise. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, may I just follow up on the response? Thank you very much for um the question. It's something um I relate to as well. My great-grandmother's house is on one hundred and thirty-fifth street, so grown up uh very close by. Um, one thing to just explain about the jurisdictional boundaries is that from a noise mitigation standpoint, as you mentioned, there is a federal actor as well, the FAA. And so when we think about the various roles and and responsibilities, well, as Jennifer said, we are looking to learn and understand more what the noise mitigation um actions are, how those are ruled out. Doesn't necessarily mean that EDC has a regulatory function when it comes to noise mitigation in the same way that our colleagues at, you know, FAA, the Department of Environmental Conservation, and other federal and state agencies do.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Vernakov, followed by Aviles, and then Gutierrez. And I'd like to also acknowledge we'd be, we have been joined by Councilmember Juang.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. Has EDC had any conversations with the MTA, with the Port Authority, with regards to expanded service for the air train?
We have not had those conversa- oh, sorry. Um, we have not had those conversations in the context of the Airport Board.
Okay. And is there any allotted funding in the JFK Redevelopment Program to implement increased service and improvements to the air train?
Again, I'm happy to take this question back to the Port Authority, but we haven't discussed that at the Airport Board meetings.
Please, we'd appreciate that. And what other alternative transit options are being considered to improve access to JFK?
Sorry, the same response. It's something that I'm happy to take back to the Port Authority.
Okay, we'll look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vernakov. The Port Authority has a lot of questions from us after this. Councilmember Aviles, followed by Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chairs. Um, let me take this out. Can't, I can't hear myself through two speakers. Um, yeah, I guess following along the line, so I I suspect you're not going to be able to ask, answer these questions, but thank you. Again, thank you for being here. Um, it is incredibly unfortunate that uh the Port Authority is not present. They should be, as is NYCHA, as does MTA, as does multiple other agencies. Um, so uh on the line of the air train, you talked about decarbonizing ways that can be further decarbonized operations at JFK. And one thing um that occurs to us is, you know, workers are incentivized to drive to JFK. They receive free parking. They're not incentivized to, by re- by receiving reduced fare on the air train or the subway. In fact, they have to pay for the subway and the air train, which is quite significant. Especially since we know a good majority of the workers are low-wage workers. So that is a huge burden. So I guess one of the things we would like to know is really press the importance of um receiving some sort of incentive, incentivizing the workers at JFK to take mass transit, to take a reduced fare air train. To flip that incentivizing to, you know, from driving to using mass transit. Um, so that's the first request. We'd like to hear what those plans are in particular. And then I think this would also address the serious traffic congestion that we see particularly in JFK. So this is, this is a serious issue in terms of traffic pollution, workers' um support, um among other things. Additionally, how, has the EDC and or the Port Authority envisioned expanded bus service into JFK? And has it explored um a select bus service lanes that could be uh routed into to JFK as well?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember. And I I think, given the various assets in in your district, you also understand the complexity of the relationship between the city, the Port Authority, and EDC um as a lease administrator. So as part of that role, and you know, Jennifer has talked about this um in regards to the ad- uh the Airport Board, we do not have any sort of direct relation, uh direct role when it comes to traffic planning in and around JFK. That said, as you know, we have a lot of interest in supporting um public transportation, improving traffic networks. And so always happy to um connect with the MTA and the Port Authority on ways to improve that without necessarily having a a specific role in that as it relates to the lease administration.
Yeah, I I will just add, I wanted to thank you for raising this issue and this concern. I had proximity to the- Sorry. Thank you for raising this issue. I think it is a serious one. I will share that I had proximity to this issue when I had previously worked for a nonprofit where we had a workforce program in Flushing, Queens. And a lot of the immigrant workers were actually trying to retain jobs at JFK Airport, but struggled to do so because of the poor transit access. And so I understand that that's a real issue. And um, you know, I'm happy to pursue that conversation with the MTA and the Port Authority.
No, thank you. We'd love to hear the response and really dive in and address the issue. It's been longstanding ever since I was a kid. It, this is, um, we must do better, and we have to do that with urgency, particularly if we are serious about climate. This is one clear way. You can charge all you want and try to get people to convert who can't afford those cars. We can do better in mass transit, and certainly the air train is utterly expensive um and a huge problem also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, uh Chairs. Um, I have just two questions. One is a little bit related to Councilmember Aviles's questions about climate, our climate response. Um, can you just tell me in the kind of multi-year um and multi-terminal upgrade of the airport, um, how an environmental study is is done, and at what point, and who is responsible for that, particularly with respect to air quality? Um, and then my second question is just in relation to other really big projects in Queens. Um, one that I think will happen, you know, soon, um, not too far from JFK, but just with relation to congestion, how are you all, or how is EDC and the Port Authority? Um, and, you know, I would ask them, but they never come. Um, how, what is the best way to work through something as massive as a JFK construction project and and other really massive infrastructure projects or stadium projects, for example, in in the borough of Queens? How, what is the response to New Yorkers, and particularly Queens residents, with regards to an uptick in congestion within the next five to to ten years when these two big projects are happening? Thank you.
So with respect to air quality monitoring, maybe which is what you were asking during the construction period of um the JFK Terminal Redevelopment, we would need to ask the Port Authority about what sort of ongoing monitoring and um sort of performance management, you know, is in place to ensure that the terminal developers and operators are um minimizing emissions during the construction period, and then, of course, during operations as well. And then I I think EDC would work closely with the Port Authority and the terminal um operators to, you know, assess whether there is a need for construction coordination in anticipation of large-scale projects, and Willet's Point, for example, coming online. And then where possible, I think the barge service that the Port Authority has put in place to bring construction materials in and C and D materials out might be a good model for us to explore, like where possible, to continue to use more alternative modes of transportation to support the construction of not only the JFK project, but other projects too.
What what would alternative m- mode look like? Uh, waterways particularly?
Waterways, of course, if there's waterfront access, understanding that that's not always the case. Um, or rail, for example, or something that EDC is really, you know, is trying to support the industry to do is to try to transition to alternative fuels or electric trucks.
Thank you. And I just, in my seven seconds, just want to uplift what Councilmember Aviles said about incentivizing um workers to have some kind of a a discount so that they can utilize public transportation. Thank you. Thank you, Chairs.
Um, Chair, can I add some additional information? So thank you for the question, Councilmember. I think one thing I would add, um, and this is my understanding, having not, you know, been um a part of this uh as the redevelopment was uh, the process was being established. But there was an environmental review process, my understanding is, with the FAA, again, that federal regulator being part of that process. Um, I believe that environmental information is available online, publicly available, the same way like environmental review materials for city projects are available, and that it did contemplate air quality monitoring. And then I think from my, um, you know, EDC's experience with working on large-scale redevelopment projects where we do environmental review, we look at, you know, traffic impacts, construction impacts, the longstanding impacts of a specific project. Um, it's our experience that we coordinate with other projects that are nearby to understand sort of the network of what is happening. And while I can't speak directly to what took place back in twenty twenty-one, I would imagine something similar occurred.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other members with questions, I'll turn it back over to Co-Chair Brooks-Bowers.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues. Um, I did want to follow up on a question I had asked back at the hearing a year ago as it pertained to open meetings law, and I don't think we ever had had follow-up to it. In your opinion, would the open meetings law apply to the Airport Board's meetings?
Um, so this was a question that we took back to the Law Department, and as I explained earlier, the Law Department's uh determination was that the Airport Board is not subject to open meetings law. Again, because it is an entity between mayoral appointees and the Port Authority appointees to serve as a function of the lease, it doesn't um have the same sort of open meetings law requirements that other public meetings would.
But one would think, like considering um the level of public impact that it has, that it would be beneficial for the public to have a a line of sight into some of the discussions that are happening behind closed doors?
I think one thing to to keep in mind is that EDC administers a lot of leases on behalf of the city of New York with various tenants of various sizes through various different assets. There are, you know, different levels of public information, and I will say from my experience coming on in the last couple of years, the JFK Redevelopment Program has some of the most external-facing documents and materials compared to other leases leases that we administer on behalf of the city because of that creation of the Community Advisory Council. And one thing, you know, as I said to Chair Fritius at the top, I don't believe that the two thousand four lease really contemplated the type of external engagement that is taking place. And I I absolutely hear your point about the community looking for more information from the Port Authority- about the community looking for more information from the Port Authority at those meetings or looking for more materials to be shared. And I'm sort of curious about the role of congressmen and the Queensborough President as co-chairs of that body in terms of setting the agenda and partnering with the Port Authority on those meetings. And what those, in, in terms of the, the topics that we've been discussing today. You know, our understanding is that there's a meeting coming up in a, in a couple of weeks, and it does seem like whether it's the traffic planning or some of the other items that have been raised, that that would be the venue for those to be discussed.
Well, one, the, while the congressman and the borough president are co-chairs of the Advisory Council, the structure in which the agenda is set is that the Port Authority sets the agenda. They review it with the co-chairs prior to Advisory Council meeting, but again, the agenda is set by the Port Authority. As someone who used to craft the agenda, I'm just speaking of that like factually. And while I do think that the Advisory Council has an important role to play, I think it's important to have EDC assume its responsibilities as it's laid out in the lease to help ensure a degree of transparency and accountability on the Port Authority's behalf. So that's what we're trying to really ensure is taking place. So we understand, like the posture of EDC, you have plenty of lease agreements that you oversee. But this is a multi-billion dollar infrastructure project happening in the midst of an environmental justice community. And so we have to make sure that we're not just building an airport for private sector to make more profits while leaving a community behind. We have a real opportunity to be transformative in what happens in those surrounding communities by the benefits that can come out of the redevelopment. And also by forging a relationship, which at one point, the Port Authority, I know, you know, when I talk to some of the elders in the community and hear about projects like the air train project and how they worked with community and what that looked like. We know what is possible in terms of forging a, a relationship with members of the community and in creating space to not only hear them, but carry out some of the things they'd like to see. I do want to pivot to MWBE contracting. Are you aware of any initiatives that the Port Authority has undertaken to meet the goal of thirty, the thirty percent MWBE contracting goal?
Our understanding is largely based on, you know, conversations at the Community Advisory Council. Meaning that the Port Authority, you know, has emphasized, for example, supporting capacity building, facilitating JV partnerships between MWBE firms and, you know, established developers or operators. So I think those are some of the initiatives that I've, you know, seen highlighted as a part of their strategy for supporting terminal developers and operators in addition to doing direct outreach in the community.
Let me take a step back, just going back to the lease again. The recent extension that took place under, I think it was de Blasio's administration. What was the, the reason that that lease was renegotiated? Because it was still in the midst of an existing lease that wasn't to expire until 2050? What triggered that negotiation?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember. It's obviously hard for us to guess about like what all of the conversations that were taking place because it was a previous administration. It was, you know, prior to both Jennifer and I's time as well as EDC's president's office. We did have some language in our testimony that explains what we understand was the reason why that 2021 lease extension took place. And from our understanding, it was very much tied to COVID. And I understand that, you know, discussions had been taking place about a JFK redevelopment effort. And because there were so many challenges at the time, this is on, on page three.
No, I see it. I had it, I had it highlighted.
Got it. So the way that we understand it, you know, because there was restrictions in international travel, because there were so many issues related to the global supply chain, because it was getting more challenging for the terminal operators to access some of the financial markets. The discussions at the time, or our review of the discussions at the time, seems to be that in order to ensure that the redevelopment would be possible, there would need to be some type of change to ensure that the terminal operators would have accessibility to a viable redevelopment. And so I can't speak directly to how, you know, why it was decided that that was the specific route. We can only just say what I'm, what I'm sure you're alluding to is that there were likely different paths that may have been available, but this was the one that was selected.
Do we know why it extended the lease to 2060? Instead of just keeping it at 2050 and making a?
We don't know why, but if I were just to think generally about real estate transactions and our negotiations with developers. There are situations where we might think about a longer lease term because that developer, in part through their lenders, you know, based on the capital financing, the funding that's being put into place to finance a private investment that's going into these projects. A combination of the developers, the lenders might then require a longer lease term in order to make that financing work, to reduce risk. So those are potentially some of the variables that are taken into consideration.
And I see from, you know, the, the extension of the timeline and just opening back up the lease, the benefits to the Port Authority, and I hear you because of the pandemic and everything being taken into consideration. What is your viewpoint in terms of what New York City got out of those negotiations?
I can't say, because frankly, I don't know the details of what the city negotiated and what the city got in addition to rent payment and additional rent payment. And, you know, a commitment from the private sector to invest in the redevelopment of an airport that I think we would all acknowledge is an important economic generator, right, for the city.
Okay, sticking back with MWBEs, thank you for that. How is EDC helping to hold the state accountable to MWBE utilization goals? Does the Port Authority report any information about its MWBE utilizations to EDC? And if so, what information is provided? And is that only in those quarterly meeting minutes? Or what's the frequency of that information if you do get it?
The Port Authority has been sharing MWBE awards and payment rates on each of the JFK redevelopment projects, including the Port Authority's investment in roadways and utilities. And presentations that look like the same presentations as what's shared at the Community Advisory Council. They've shared those twice at the two Airport Board meetings that were convened last year. So we see, for example, you know, a breakdown of awards and payments for MBEs. And then within MBE categories, the awards to Asian, Black, and Latino contractors. And then to WBEs and to LBEs based on tiers. For the, for the Port Authority, Terminal 1, 8, 4, and 6.
And what power does EDC or the city have to enforce? And I know the majority leader asks a variation of this question, but what power does EDC or the city have to enforce the Port Authority's compliance, particularly with that goal?
I don't think there are specific provisions in the lease that speak to enforcement mechanisms or remedies that are specific to MWBE performance, either in the original lease and I think in the lease extension.
Chair, if I could just follow up about the, the MWBE participation and where and how those numbers are, are reported. I will say that, you know, in, in my prep materials, we do have the presentation that was shared at the Community Advisory Council meeting back in November. And there are multiple slides that speak directly to what Jennifer just described. So there are things about MWBE and LBE participation all the way through September 2023. So that was made available to the public at that meeting and is now available on the JFK redevelopment website as well.
So EDC doesn't get it in advance of those meetings? You just get it when they put it out publicly?
Yeah, that's right. As, as Jennifer has been describing, the Airport Board as, as this fun, this meeting, this function, we get very similar, the exact same information. Of course, we're happy to go back and, and confirm that those slides are the same, but from a cursory view, all of the material is consistent and publicly available online.
Would we be able to get a copy of one of the reports that you've received from the Port Authority?
Yes, we, we said to Chair Freitas that we're happy to share that while we confirm ourselves as well.
It's also my understanding that the Board of Commissioners within the Port Authority had softened the penalties for not meeting MWBE goals during the COVID-19 pandemic. Has EDC been following that? And do you know if that decision has been reversed now that we're on the other side of the pandemic?
I am not aware of sort of the intricacies of the Port Authority's relationship between the Board of Commissioners and, and the redevelopment. From what I'm seeing about the materials that are made available, it seems that they are tracking based on the commitments made in the 2021 lease extension.
I, I do think it's worthwhile for EDC to definitely follow, like, movement by the Board of Commissioners as it pertains to JFK in particular, because again, like as a landlord and one that has certain items that are prescribed in the lease. I think this is one of those that kind of speaks to that as well. What role does EDC play in? Well, you're saying you don't have a role in overseeing the MWBE participation, because in the lease it talks to the more recent extension, it spoke to like certain community benefits that the Port Authority was to do and, and to be working in closer collaboration and partnership with the city. So has any of that happened? And I know you're ramping up, but has any of that happened at all yet?
Chair, respectfully, is there a specific community initiative maybe that you can provide as an example of progress?
I'm gonna, it's a community initiative. I'm just focusing on the MWBE participation, like how we're holding accountable the Port Authority, because again, the lease leaves room for the port to work more closely with the city. And it could very well be like the city saying, we're gonna, you know, create access to capital through SBS, or it, it could even be the city that's doing something, right? Not saying solely it's the Port Authority, but just wanting to know. Has any of that happened? You know, what role is EDC kind of taking in that space?
We've started to have those conversations because in reviewing, I think, the latest MWBE rates, we noticed that in Terminal 6, for example, they are not achieving the thirty percent minimum MWBE participation. And so that has prompted a conversation at EDC. We haven't had this conversation with the Port Authority yet about, you know, better understanding why that's happening. And then, you know, naturally, we would want to understand what is the Port Authority doing, what is that terminal developer doing in order to shore up? Supporting more MWBE participation in that project. And then where there's an opportunity for SBS and the mayor's office even, given their, you know, keen focus on increasing MWBE participation in construction and other contracts, how we might be able to work together to supplement what's happening today.
Thank you for that. I'm gonna jump to community engagement concerns and then I'll end off with the intro 134 question. So in terms of community engagement and concerns, in our previous hearing, former Executive Director of the Port Authority, Chris Ward, responded that the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey does not build host agreements into their projects. However, community impact should be taken into account. And there should be a community benefits agreement. In addition, an advocate emphasized that projects with CBAs benefit the project and the surrounding community, communities. Do you know whether or not the terminal developers have made any commitment for community benefits on the redevelopment? And if so, what are they?
I'm not aware of, sorry. I'm not aware of community benefits agreements that have been negotiated with the developers.
What efforts has EDC made to ensure the community's needs are being met as it relates to the airport?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember. Can you ask the question one more time, please?
Sure. What efforts has EDC made to ensure the community's needs are being met as they relate to the airport?
So I think as part of our, you know, ramp up on the, the Airport Board and the conversations about the Community Advisory Council, I think there's been a couple of things. One is reestablishing that those meetings happen, right? Because as we mentioned, they had not been, been happening. And so creating the, the space where we are able to not only talk about lease administration more generally, but also raise specific concerns that we've heard from the community. So in our testimony, we talked about the example on the overnight trucking. I know that's something that you have been leading on for the council and, and for the city. We participated in, in a few of your public meetings on that. And then we're also able to take that into our Airport Board meetings and to, you know, encourage the Port Authority to make additional acreage available. And that was something that did occur. And so I, I think as we continue to strengthen our connection to the JFK redevelopment program, we'll continue to look for additional opportunities like that, where we are amplifying the voice of the community at the same time as reinforcing EDC's mission in terms of economic development across, across all five boroughs, including Queens.
And is the Community Advisory Council meeting the only place EDC is able to learn about the community level concerns with the redevelopment?
I would say that's the, that's the primary way. You know, Jennifer mentioned about us participating in the CAO and other venues, obviously. You know, my team, the, the Government and Community Relations Team at EDC has extensive relationships across Queens with, you know, organizations, neighborhood associations, and so on. And so you know, we definitely hear the concerns in a variety of ways, but in terms of like a, you know, JFK redevelopment-focused entity, the Advisory Council is that.
EDC noted in their testimony last year that they worked with elected leaders to include a commitment from the Port Authority to create scholarship programs for middle and high school students, an aviation-focused STEM program at York College, and the expansion of a summer mini camp collaboration with the Eastern Queens Alliance that educates middle school students on environmental stewardship and sustainability. I do know the status of a few of them. I'm curious on the status of the scholarship piece in terms of that commitment, where things are with it now.
I, I was gonna say, I think we need an update from the Port Authority about the status of those initiatives too. It's, it's going to be a focus for an upcoming Airport Board meeting about the status of those programs.
Okay. And do you know if any new projects have been developed since the last hearing? And if so, what is the status of those new projects?
I'm not aware of new projects.
And would you be able to ask them for an update on that as well? And then in the lease extension, it talks also about the environmental component. And I know the Port Authority has been heavily focused on sustainability, electrification of the, the buses on airport and what have you. But there has been and this is within the redevelopment or even looking beyond the redevelopment and just as JFK is a neighbor in terms of the noise mitigation investments. There hasn't really been anything that I've heard of as it pertains to noise mitigation. there hasn't really been anything that I've heard of as it pertains to noise mitigation or monitoring. Is that any part of the conversations that EDC has had with the Port Authority? Because this has come up in past Community Advisory Council meetings. I think this was before EDC actually started going to them, but I'm not sure if you looked back to any of the notes or anything. But has that been a part of any conversations that you all have had?
You know, as we were saying to Councilmember Narcisse, it has not been yet. As, you know, as we've explained, I think part of our role now is to really think critically about how to amplify community concerns in those Airport Board meetings. But I can't say that we've like gone back to, you know, previous Community Advisory Council meetings, you know, prior to twenty-twenty-three to check in on status updates. And, you know, again, I would just encourage that with this upcoming Advisory Council meeting, that that would be a really appropriate venue to ask the Port Authority those kinds of questions directly.
I hear you, but I think that the Port Authority as a government agency also has the ability to come to a government body and testify, just like EDC is doing as well. Pivoting to Intro one thirty-four, what are the current terms of the contract between the city and EDC regarding reporting on JFK redevelopment projects?
Our ability, EDC's ability to be responsive to providing the information that you've requested through Intro one thirty-four, I think obviously really relies on the Port Authority's cooperation. You know, when we asked for their initial feedback about what, if any, of this information could be provided to the council, we received mixed feedback. In some instances, I think they emphasized that a lot of this information is already publicly available. So for example, in addition to the MWBE participation through awards and payments, they do provide a list of companies that actually have been awarded those contracts. So that's an example of how, from their view, they're already providing some of this information in a publicly available way. There are other instances where there's some information that they're not willing to share and that we frankly will have to have a conversation with them to better understand why.
How does EDC currently perform reporting to the city? Just broadly speaking.
I mean, there's a variety of different reports that we submit to the City Council. I'm thinking of, you know, we submit an annual NYC Ferry Report that has information like ridership data. We, you know, the, I'm honestly trying to think of other reports that we submit. But there are, oh, there's our annual investment report that is also submitted every January, where we provide additional information about annual investments, our real estate transactions, and so on. That's submitted to the mayor and the City Council. We also participate in the Mayor's Management Report. And so those are the three sort of most substantive reports that come to mind that we submit on an annual basis. I would just point out, though, with Intro one thirty-four, the difference between those reports are those reports we are reporting on work that EDC actually completes, that we fund, programs that we manage. Whereas based on our, at least, current review of Intro one thirty-four, almost all of the information that the council is asking for is not produced or developed by EDC. And so it's asking EDC to compel the Port Authority to report. So that's the thing that the Law Department is currently reviewing. And of course, we'll, you know, happily have additional conversations with the council on that. But I think it is an important nuance to recognize.
No, thank you for that feedback. So I just wanted to take, and I know we're joined online by State Senator Leroy Comrie, State Senator James Sanders, Assembly Member Khalil Anderson, also that, you know, have very much been invested in the work that's happening at JFK as well. And again, just wanting to thank you for sitting for today's hearing on an important project that's happening in the city of New York. And as we said before, it's something that we will continue to monitor in terms of what that engagement is. We would love to hear from EDC also, like, and I guess maybe you can answer this now, too. Like, what are some of the ways that we, from the council perspective or the state legislators are able to help support EDC in fulfilling your responsibilities in the lease? So like, for example, in Intro one thirty-four, talking about how to compel the Port Authority, right? When we're trying to compel them to come here in the council, like, what are some of the avenues that we should be exploring to take in order to make the Port Authority more transparent as it pertains to redevelopment? Because I think it's beyond crazy that they're like leasing city land that they don't own, but they're dictating the rules of engagement with us. And if you imagine being a renter and living in someone's homes, there's still certain guidelines you're still required to adhere, even as a renter, right? And so the Port Authority is operating on both sides right now. And I think that's wholly unacceptable. On their behalf, they are the only state agency that I know of that does this. And quite honestly, it's only under this current leadership, because as I said in the past and as former Executive Director Chris Ward has said, there's no reason why the port can't come here and answer the questions of the council. I'm not sure what they're scared of or what there is to hide in terms of the redevelopment, why they don't see fit to come before the council, to be transparent in a space where they're not curating what information is going out and how we're able to receive that information. And so I'm curious to hear, do you like foresee any ways that the council or the state legislators are able to support EDC to fulfill its responsibilities in the lease?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate the question, Councilmember. I think that we would sort of have to come back to you on thoughts about specifics. I would say your question is a bit grander than we would be able to answer right now. We can only speak to the relationship that the current administration has sort of inherited. And we've talked at length about the things that we've been doing, you know, under President Kimball's leadership to continue to sort of improve in our role as a lease administrator. I'll just, I know I've said this a couple of times, but to reiterate, would just ask you to keep in mind that the two thousand four lease did not fully contemplate a massive redevelopment. And I think you yourself have mentioned some of the sort of challenges with the twenty-twenty-one lease extension. And we're not able to speak to how all of those decisions were made for that as well. What we can say is that we're open to continued conversation, where we can talk more about ways that, you know, we can be, continue to be supportive in our role as a, you know, nonprofit corporation that's dedicated to economic development in the city.
No, thank you for that. And I look forward to hearing, you know, from EDC on feedback on what that could look like. I did receive a question from Assembly Member Anderson that I would like to ask of you. In twenty-seventeen, the New York State Comptroller conducted an audit of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey to review their compliance with their lease with NYC EDC. The Comptroller's report found that they were not fully in compliance. Can you share, if at all, any possible actions that took place to ensure that the Port Authority has since been held accountable?
Chair, we honestly cannot speak to a twenty-seventeen Comptroller's report from a previous administration or what actions were taken after that.
I'm curious of the note taken that EDC takes, because I know before you were mentioning that during even the Airport Board's staff notes. But we have to be able, for the sake of continuity and being able to pass this information down, right? Because I think about Sancho, like being able to look back to, you know, to not have to go through the same mistakes. And right now, we're in an awful position where we have no type of historical perspective in terms of what led to the lease extension or any of these components. And so, you know, I'm just curious as to like what, how EDC as an agency maintains records on behalf of the city of New York? Because these are multi-million dollar lease agreements that are established that generates billions of dollars for the city of New York. But how do we know that, one, it's being done in decency in order to the way it's laid out in the lease or not, when we can't even look back to twenty-twenty-one? Like, we're not saying look back to nineteen forty-seven, we can't look back to twenty-twenty-one.
Right, but Chair, keep in mind that EDC was not a signatory to the lease in twenty-twenty-one, right? That it was the city of New York that signed the twenty-twenty-one lease and the SBS Commissioner who signs on behalf of the city. So the city designates EDC to administer the lease on behalf of the city. But, you know, while EDC likely participated in meetings and our predecessors were, you know, probably a part of that, it's, you know, a sort of different ballgame when you are not the one actually signing it. You know, it's the city of New York that is doing so.
Right, but even still, when EDC starts to assume its role, it's not like SBS is not a city sister agency where that information could be shared across agencies. Like, it's not like we're talking about the feds or the states. We're talking about a sister agency that you could easily say, what are the notes on this? Like, how are we record-keeping on a lease agreement that took place in the middle of an existing lease that didn't really need to even be touched? There's something there as to why we even extended the lease. And I hear you about COVID, but then when the negotiations happen, how, what was the posture of the city on behalf of New Yorkers? We don't have any like idea of that.
I agree with you, and I think something to keep in mind with that is it's not quite as simple as, you know, only three years ago. It's three years ago with an administration change, right? And so from both a leadership perspective and a posture perspective, we would imagine that, you know, goals and tasks change just by virtue of, you know, all of us here coming in shortly after that time. But I do hear your point about what can we do as, you know, the sort of contemporary EDC to ensure that we are tracking so that our, I don't know if "forbears" is the right word, but, you know, future EDCers are able to answer future council members' questions. It's something to think about. And I'm very thankful for Jennifer's leadership in terms of the things that she's been doing to establish her transportation team for, you know, very important matters such as this one.
Thank you again.
I'd actually like to add, just, I think to address your question about what we can do moving forward, I think what's come across very clearly to me through this testimony and through this hearing is that you have a long history, you and other electeds, a long history in the community. You will continue to have a longstanding relationship with the Port Authority and the airport because of your proximity to this facility. And so, you know, your level of care and responsibility is distinct and important. You know, so our commitment, I think, today is to work with you and to have follow-up conversations, to really draw upon your knowledge of what has happened in the past, what gaps you continue to be frustrated by in terms of information, and for us to have follow-up conversations about how we can make these Airport Board conversations more effective, you know, and make the most of that venue, while recognizing that there are also opportunities, hopefully, outside of those Airport Board meetings as well to strengthen our partnership and ensuring that the JFK redevelopment project really delivers on its promise.
And I truly, truly appreciate your statement. It is, JFK is a longtime neighbor to myself and the people that I represent in Southeast Queens, as well as the Speaker and Councilmember Williams. And it's extremely important to make sure that we are reflecting what we're hearing on the ground. Not all the time, people from our communities can make it to a hearing to testify or stay for hours to listen to a presentation and be able to ask the questions that they have. So they call us during the day or when they see us at events, and they express their frustrations, whether it's that small MWBE that continues to go to these events, that continues to apply for opportunity, that's not getting an opportunity, when you have Far Rockaway not really seeing anyone in the workforce on the program. Or, and I know that the Port Authority is trying to work to improve those numbers. When you think about what, how does the community benefit from it? You know, how are we leveraging this project to be transformative in the community? These are the spaces that, you know, we have concerns. I definitely welcome the opportunity to work more closely with Chair Farias as well as EDC to make sure that we are leveraging EDC to fulfill its role that's set out in the lease to make the Port Authority more accountable and more transparent. Because right now, the Port Authority is flying in the dark with no type of ramifications whatsoever. And our community is sitting on the sidelines while the airport is being rebuilt, and that's not okay. But thank you.
Thank you, Co-Chair Brooks Powers. And thank you, folks, for your public testimony today. This panel is now dismissed. And while we wait for folks to make their way out, I'm now going to open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or visual video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card, if you have not done so already, with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, JFK Airport Redevelopment Plans and Introduction one thirty-four, a local law in relation to requiring regular reports on the redevelopment plans at John F. Kennedy International Airport. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms at the front of the room. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I'm now going to call the first panel. Please repeat your name before your testimony as I'm reading from what I can read on these cards. Rabbi Garth Marshant, Bernard Garrett, and Raul Rivera. Rabbi Garth Marshant, you can begin.
Yeah, I'm Rabbi Garth Marshant. I belong to the Queens Jewish Community Council and serve several synagogues in Queens, in Southeast Queens. And as my task, I took it upon myself to get, include the community in the contracts. Now, I live, we used to live in Rosedale, and I moved into your further your district in Far Rockaway. But I lived right there on the edge of Rosedale. And I want to tell you, at night, the airplanes come ten feet over our house. Boom, you'd think there's going to be a crash, right? And you could see everybody in the airplane, that's how low it comes down, noise after noise. And then the airplanes dump the fluid right into, into the place right around us. And you see the birds with the fluid in there. Sometime they walk, they come in front of our house and they die right there. That's not safe, and nobody's talking about that. That's not safe, and nobody's talking about that, right? And throughout the community. Now, number two is that we, I got together a lot of the businesses, not just black, Latino businesses, Asian businesses, to get contracts. Not one response to any one of them, not one. It's a front. They don't respond. And I'm telling you, the reason why the Port Authority is not addressing you is because it's controlled by the governor of the state of New Jersey. Now, let me tell you what the City Council and the Mayor of Newark did. They just built a new terminal at Newark Airport. The Mayor Baraka forced the governor to give minority contracts. You know how many minority contracts they got at that one airport? Ninety! From the community, because they had an agreement, and the mayor, because it's the same agreement like what you had here, the lease agreement, the mayor said, "We're not going to have this lease unless you give our people contracts." And that one small development was like for $2 billion, $2.5 billion? Ninety minority contracts. Here, we got none. They, all they're doing is that they're giving contracts to consultants. But as far as contracts to do sheetrocking, contracts to do roofing, not one. And I have brought 20 qualified contractors to the table. And every time you send the information to them, they give you no answer. No answer, and they can't get nothing back to get a contract. And they tell you, "Oh, we got minority contractors." You know, the minority contractors are consultants, not people from the community, consultants. And I need for you to check with the DA report from Manhattan DA Bragg's, where he arrested several people with the WMBE programs as a front. Check the report out. And I need for you to check with the City Council and Mayor Baraka in Newark, New Jersey, and how they did it to get 90 contracts, and we're not getting any.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Bernard Garrett?
Hello. I'm back.
You need to turn the mic on, and it needs to be in front of you. Thank you.
I'm a little bit nervous right now, but thank God that I'm here, and thank them for allowing me to be here, to be a part of what's going on today. My company is Queens Bridge Cleaning, and thanks to Savannah right there, I am doing work on the JFK Terminal as a cleaning contractor. And if it hadn't have been for Savannah when she was working there, you know, it's not easy to run a business, and if you stumble, you might not clean behind the toilet, you might not clean something. So I was on the verge of getting terminated. So Savannah stood up for me and seemed to it that I got another chance. And as a result of Savannah, I'm making millions of dollars at the airport terminal for right now. And I got one small problem. They're giving MBEs a limit as to how much they can make. And why should they, because they're scarce, why should they short the amount of money that they can make if they qualify to do the work? So I just want them to raise the ceiling a little bit, if that's possible, because I got several different specs that I can do in the construction industry. Not only cleaning, we provide labor, we provide sheetrock, we provide a number of different services. That's all of my spec. So I go to these meetings to meet new people and to share and give other people hope. Because I've been certified for years, and this is the first time that I got the opportunity to work on the airport. And I feel good about it, this started with one contract, one contract turned into seven, and I'm still getting more. So thank God for allowing me to be here, and most of all, I'd like to thank that lady right there, because she made it all possible. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. We always love giving some shared praise for our members, so thank you for your testimony. I'd now like to call on Raul Rivera.
Good afternoon. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. We know that the topic is regarding JFK and transparency and equity, but it's hard to get hold of our council members, so sometimes we have to come right here and speak. We'll take our two minutes, our three minutes. About 34 years ago, I was in the presence of a true leader. About 34 years ago, I was in a room in the presence of a true leader. Her name was Rosa Parks. And Rosa Parks was in the room, and I was only 20 years old back then, and I knew who she was, and I know what she meant. This committee is not protecting the drivers. You know, we're a driver advocate. There's a lot of issues happening. We have bills for the drivers.
Mr. Rivera, you have to stay on topic. We are here talking about JFK redevelopment plan and Intro 134. Do you have a comment on the hearing topic?
My comment is regarding the drivers, the airport. We've been to the airport, I got 23,000 trips, I made plenty of trips to the airport. But we can't have access to our council members, we have to come here, that's what we're doing. We're coming here, we're talking about transparency. We have bills, we've been advocating for our bills for the longest. We've gone from advocating for our bills to filing complaints with the COIB. There is no transparency in this committee. There's no transparency with many, many council members, and that's why we're upset. There's things that are happening, I'm a native New Yorker, I'm not blind, I see things that are happening. And we file, when we file complaints, there are valid complaints. Now we can't hold cell phones, now you try to censor us, stay on topic.
Can you give us a comment on the driver experience towards JFK?
Well, I'm here, I'm here to, I'm here to let you know that we filed a complaint on the public advocate, Jomani Williams, we filed a complaint on Councilmember Aviles, and we filed a complaint on Speaker Adams. That's why we filed a complaint, we want to give a copy to the Chair, because she's good friends with Adams, and we want you to give her that copy. We want to submit this copy. We're filing complaints, it might not go nowhere, but we're filing our complaints. You guys ain't working for The New Yorker, and that's why we come here and we do what we do.
You can give that document to the Sergeant-at-Arms in the front, and they will make sure that we receive a copy. Thank you for coming today for your testimony. We will now move to virtual participants. I'd like to now call on our virtual participants. First up in this panel is our Assemblymember Khalil Anderson.
Okay, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Madam Chair?
We hear you.
Okay. Let me know when the clock starts.
You can start when the sergeant's called the timer.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Chair Farias as well as Chair Brooks Powers for hosting this hearing today. I'm really grateful that as the state Assemblymember representing the entirety of JFK Airport and the ancillary portions of the airport that lie in our communities, to testify today my experience in working within the JFK redevelopment process. My concern, just as the Chair had conveyed, as well as some of the other members have conveyed, is transparency. And the reality is, is the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey has not been transparent throughout the entirety of the JFK redevelopment project. Whether it is transparency around MWBE numbers, whether it's transparency on LBE numbers, whether it's transparency about access to employment opportunities and contracting opportunities, there are some concerns about that level of transparency, that's number one. The second thing is, there are concerns about the lease extension. There was a lease extension authorized by the past administration, and so that lease extension, which EDC was not able to answer questions about the extension or the current status of compliance with the lease, today, they were not able to testify and answer that question. These are concerns because when we're talking about transparency, there is a community benefits agreement that is tied to that lease extension, that 10-year lease extension, and we don't have an accurate reporting or reporting on where the status of those programs named in the community benefits agreement are. And so, these are some of the concerns. I know that the Port Authorities are actively working through the redevelopment program, that they offer to make some amends, but they are not reaching or meeting the goals of making those amends, and these are some of the concerns that we have. Again, I'm grateful to the two Chairs for having this joint hearing to discuss, and it is my hope that EDC can come back with some answers, otherwise, it can be within our discretion to work with other city and/or state agencies to get us the answers that we need.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Assemblymember. We always appreciate when you come to our hearings here in the council. I'd now like to call on the next panelist, Evadelia Boyd.
Starting time.
Hello, Co-Chair Farias, and good afternoon to Chair and Co-Chair Brooks Powers. Thank you very much for hosting this meeting. My comment is, well, first of all, I too am disappointed that Port Authority did not show up. I was coming here to hear specifics on the job opportunities. It's great to say that there are opportunities, but I wanted to hear specifics and on the noise mitigation process that's happening. So these are the things that, you know, some of the things that I was coming here to hear more about. The representatives from EDC were not able to give us any specifics on those concerns. They did speak on the space that was recently allotted for the trucks to park overnight, and I was looking to find out exactly how many spaces are now available. She mentioned 100. I wanted to know the total amount of spaces that are available, are they all open? Is it filled? Is it near full capacity? I wanted more specifics. Also, I wanted to know exactly how are the space being used? Is it being used by buses, trucks, trailers, exactly, you know, more specifics? And also wanted to know, can NYPD use the space for their towing and enforcement projects that they do when they are towing those illegal, illegally parked trucks in our neighborhoods and our streets? And they also spoke on community engagement. I was hoping to hear more specifics. I, I am, excuse me, I sit on the Board of the Rosedale Civic Association, and my community of Rosedale is impacted by JFK with the construction. I have friends and family that lives in Springfield, in Laurelton, those communities are also directly impacted by JFK. So I, you know, I was trying to learn more and hear more about exactly what is this outreach that they say they're doing? Because in the Rosedale community, it's, we're not getting the outreach that they're talking about. So I wanted to hear more about that, and hopefully maybe this can be relayed back to EDC, because we certainly need to know in our community about the job opportunities, the noise mitigation, and I heard something about scholarships for students. So I'm definitely, you know, hoping that we can hear more about this from EDC. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for staying within the time. We always love a timely testimony. I'd now like to call on a virtual panelist that's listed as Gabriel Associates Incorporated. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Starting time.
We can hear you. Please state your name for the public record, and you can begin.
My name is Felipe, F-E-L-I-P-E, Ben Degeat, B-E-N-T-E-G-E-A-T.
Thank you, you can begin your testimony.
So as a minority-owned firm, we have had the opportunity to participate in projects like Auburn by the Sea on the, in that particular case where the developer is the, and, and we, we're hoping that some of the systems were set up so that it'd be easier for minority and women-owned businesses to actually participate in the redevelopment of the airport, like they've done, for example, in the Auburn by the Sea.
So in terms of how you're trying to get opportunities, have you attended any of the Advisory Council meetings of the redevelopment program?
Yes, we attended last year, and we're not there presently today, but we are participating by phone.
And have you been able to meet with any of like the developers? Have you had opportunities to participate on the redevelopment to date?
Have not been able to participate through contractual opportunities yet, but we hope that there'll be some in the near future. We also have, we also have relationships with subcontractors who are Queens-based. And so, for example, there's the Challenger Corporation, which is based in Queens, and have participated as a subcontractor to some of our general contracting opportunities.
Okay, and I believe we have your information, so I'm going to have a member of my team connect you with the outreach team from the JFK redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for your testimony. Seeing no one left in the room to testify and having no one virtually left to testify, we will now adjourn the hearing. Thank you all for coming.